Ready?
Pretty big.
I did.
I can't see it though. I didn't expect it was gonna come out this size, but. Thank God. Let's do it for ya.
All right. All right, you gentlemen.
Take your time, Josh. Don't trip up the table.
Good to have a director, huh?
We on Zoom?
Yep.
Recording in progress.
We all set, Josh?
Yes.
Regular meeting of the Swansea Board of Selectmen for today, December 7th is called to order.
Make the motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of November 30th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have anybody online? Do you have anybody online? Republican input?
Oh, you'll be able to hear them if they wanted to speak.
Anyone here have any questions or comments before we get into the rest of our agenda?
Oh, Mr. Krebs. Oh, hi. I don't want to miss this one. Excuse me for not forgetting, let me move this slide. Robert Krebs, 319 Holbrook, resident, Swansea, New Hampshire. State Rep Rhodes and I had a meeting with Michael a couple mornings ago. We have brought up the fact that we've had the road test. We've come to an agreement that it's a safety issue.
Excuse me, are you referring to?
The crossing.
The agenda item that we have? I just, this particular portion is just public input, but you're on the agenda for 535.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No need to apologize.
Just go right into it.
Because once I miss the beginning, I end up needing the whole meeting itself.
All right, so did anyone else have any comment before we get to the agenda?
Thank you for doing my 331 Capitol Fire. Just wanted to say thank you for the time, efforts, and consideration with Chief, and continuing forward and supporting the Fire Department. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We always supported the Fire Department.
Well, it just, I totally understand what you're saying, Bill, but it just, it meant a lot to us, so it doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks. Anyone else? No, Mr. Krebs. Is Jennifer coming?
No, she just left Concord.
Okay.
She was held up with a vote, so she won't be here, so I am here. As I'm repeating myself, we had a meeting with Michael. We discussed at length the state results, where the state's position is. It's a clear and present danger, we know the speed line is too fast for there, through that area. Another area which no one has talked about, we did a street study, we haven't done a pedestrian study. The amount of people coming through there is easily tripled in the last couple of years. It's being promoted by the state on a website. I've met some people from foreign countries coming through my property over the summer, so a lot of people come. Now, as far as people who live here and pay taxes, accessing the trail is another problem that we have not even talked about. Many of the people, Mrs. Hebert, Gary St. Peter, residents, and I, there's just a few off Miami. There's at least a dozen people who bring their dogs from the covered bridge, Westport Road, up by the cemetery where it's 35, to get to the trail, in which they go north for how long, it's almost go forever and then come back. It's along that road where they are walking with their dog that these cars are flying around the corner. Just, I thought it was just absurd that Mrs. Hebert told me, she goes, "Well, I can tell that they're coming fast, I can't see them. I can tell which ones are coming fast, and I jump out of the way." I mean, so if anyone would like to come along and walk that area with me, I'd be more than happy to accompany you if you'd like to come and see what I'm talking about.
He's looking right at you, Cam.
I know. I think you'll, well, I don't hear anyone take us, but, so, where we're at with this is, we're gonna, we would like to ask the town to write a letter to the state requesting 30 mile an hour speed line. Whether they do it or don't, that's fine. I think it's prudent, for many reasons, on legal reasons, that the town does write a letter to them. Because this has been publicly discussed, it's documented, it's been brought up and advocated by a state rep. We've had a study up by the state, we know that we're speeding, so let's just ask the state. I read in a couple areas, if the town feels that it's unsafe, the state may make an allowance and agree with the state and grant it or whatever. And it'll have the proper legislative term. But by doing so, the town is saying that there is a public safety, that we took, discussed it, it's been out there, that we've had the test, and we're telling the state that we think it's a problem. So, somewhere down the road, and I'll take the over on this, if there is an accident, our municipal council and the town will take a piece of paper and say, "We told you, and we're not, we can't be adjoined by any type of legal lawsuit going forward." I brought this up towards some associates of mine in Chicago, were trial attorneys for an insurance company, and they said, and this was just free advice, they said, "You don't want a trial attorney to get hold of this if something happens." And they told me that some shape or form, by sending a letter to the state, saying that we've gone through all the process, we are verified, saying that we notice that there's, we can't be assumed being negligent, because now that we know, if you do, if you know about something that's wrong and something happens, that's knowingly intent negligence. This way, we're telling the state, "Hey, there's a problem, our state rep said there's a problem. The state speed test or test evaluation said that there's average almost 40 miles an hour." And so, basically, the town is, I think, insulated, and if they decide, be so kind to give us 30 miles an hour, so be it. The only thing we ask, or Jennifer asked us that before the letter sent, that she may review it. That's it.
I think we're pretty much on record of being in support, so... It's the last page on the consent agenda, I believe. So apparently, the letter's been drafted. Don't know if Jennifer's reviewed it, but we can make sure that she has opportunity to read it.
Well, I thank you for your time and diligence and you're acting quite quickly to it.
Sorry it took so long. Well, we appreciate the effort that you've put in to bring it to our attention and to bring it along with Jennifer to get to this point.
I, this was not about me, at least half a dozen people asked me to do this, I don't know why, I think they're crazy, but I said I would bring this up. Mrs. Brown, so forth and so on, everyone that lives along that road. So, I thank the time and I thank this lady for her service. That's all I have, thank you.
You, thanks a lot.
Do good holidays.
You as well. Here's now. Apparently, it's right over here.
Mr. Chair, before we just jump out of order a little bit, do we want to take item 6B?
Sure. Mr. Larrondo, you've been nominated. We joined Southwest Regional Planning's Transportation Committee. Would you like to speak to the board and?
Any questions?
I have a motion, I'll make the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for doing this, Gus.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Chief Cool, welcome.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, before Chief gets started, I did, I know the size of the spreadsheet, you brought your own, so you're in a little better shape, but it's a little small and probably difficult to read, so I did set this up in case we wanted to try to use the projector to project it, or I think that's probably not right. We have to move him out of the way, but.
You're choreographing this now.
If you guys can read it, that's fine, if not, we can.
Well, I can tell you, I can't read it if it's done that way.
The screen would be up here, so you could see it. Try to proceed.
I think you should see the screen.
All right. Make that happen.
You're gonna have to.
Whatever logistical challenges you have.
You'll have to sit over here.
Where are you gonna put the screen on?
Right where you are. He wasn't gonna be able to see the piece of paper either. Every time, this is like the first time.
How the wind friend.
And your court is noteworthy. Get someone younger. We need a teenager. Usually, you just plug it in.
Several reasons.
Oh. There we go.
They're just tired of us, aren't they?
Clear as day.
You all set?
Yes.
Can we reduce that? Take care, Gus. Take care, Michael.
Okay, so, what we have here is ambulance budget at the top, then the Fire Department budget, main budget, footnotes, which we can get into as needed, and then a couple other small side budgets, forest fires, hydrants, and just Southwest Mutual Aid Dispatch. So, the overall Fire Department budget, which is what I think our focus is on, is looking at an increase of about $40,000, and that's about a 7% increase. Worth noting that that does not include any wage increases or any of the additional staffing that I think the chief is planning to discuss tonight, but I think it's a good place to start with any questions or concerns about these line items, then we can get into some of the other discussion items.
Anybody have any questions? Comments?
The heating oil takes into account the new bid price?
Yes. Yeah, I think that was about a 80% increase between, I think it was two-something last year to 395 or so this year.
Bill, the part-time wages and the part-time shift coverage wages running through the end of November are trending well below projected. Is that made up in the overage of the Fire Department wages call on training?
Yeah, we think that's a posting issue with some of the, with the new, between the new timekeeping and financial softwares, we think it's a posting issue between what's getting posted to the weekend coverage or the, or the part-time versus the on-call, but it looks like it's relatively, might be a little bit over, but it looks like it relatively evens out, so we just need to figure out how those are getting posted.
Are the three interflying?
Yes.
I had a question regarding the IT software support was substantially over budget. And is that expected to continue? I noticed you requested a fairly significant increase over that, Michael reduced it down, so could you talk to us about that?
Yeah, so we took on the ESL import program, or import software, reporting software, which was, the startup cost was greatly significant last year, run down, all changed. This year is actually gonna go, it's gonna be reduced, recurring costs after the startup get easier. I believe that's what we, we had, also I e-scheduled one year on my shift too, so we actually paid for that, but we just continue that service. Not like put us over a little bit.
So that put us over for this year, but going forward for next year, you requested five more, 5,000 more than Michael's recommending?
Yeah, because the firehouse still is going away, so we're gonna be, not transitioning to ESL, which was, by our space, there's nothing, the cost was nothing. So this, ESL is about 65 here. And part of that dissolution, which is for our own training and evaluations, that's a cost that we added. In fact, the evaluations last year, so it's, maybe it's added a lot of cost there.
So where should we come down on the 22 that you're requesting or the 17 that Michael's recommending?
So, yeah, the, Michael already talked about it today, and we got it down to the 17.6, that should cover it.
If you look at the, this is where the footnotes do come in handy, so this shows the breakdown of each of the softwares that go into that, and that's how we got up to the 17.6, so that's the.
That's the number.
I can make it. I can make it bigger, but then you can't necessarily see as far over. Right, Twin Bridges is in there, yes, yep, right here.
And the service contracts, is there, is there, it's not a significant amount of money, but is it gonna double in December? In other words, if you got a delayed billing on that, that would bring it up to the roughly 2,200?
No. I don't think so, right?
Is that the one we were talking about, funding the air vac?
That should have been in the maintenance.
That'd be, really maintenance, okay. So that's mainly the copier?
Copier and, we have AT&T or something.
Oh, the AT&T, yeah, monitors and everything.
Those come on a cell phone.
That's on a cell phone.
I think it's mainly the copier, so that might be when we could knock down 500 bucks or so.
The physicals, and then I don't know what infect control means, but anyway.
Actually control.
Okay, sweet, I should have gone with what I assumed. You know, we've talked about this for years, I, I'm personally very much in favor of physicals. I'm disappointed to see that firefighters are not taking advantage of it. And I'd rather than see a, I mean, I'd love to see a cut down to 4,500, but I'm more concerned with the fact that they're not taking advantage of it, and it seems to me to be something that would be important to you all and.
Yeah, we sent a number of firefighters to get the physical, they were under the grant, so safety grant, that we have in place, so that, that gave one of that cost. We did have some of the new members go for those physicals. We had, we met with most of the members, I'm still meeting some others, we signed the town's agreement, medical policy, which spells out that police fire DPW required all the physicals, so first of the year, we're assigning people physicals this year. Last year, we asked people about them, and again, like you said, some people are, most of them did not take advantage of that, so this year, we'll be assigning, and that's that. So, we'll kind of, we'll do that this year.
So is the 4,500 request, is that gonna be adequate?
Yeah, it would hopefully. We had dropped that down, we cut that in half last year.
And the protective coating, yeah, protective clothing is a fairly significant increase, is?
Yeah, like all, all the vendors and nap doctors and all the vendors, the town says everything's getting price increased, so some things, 5%, 10%, we're anticipating, I mean, it's a significant cost, everybody posted, the numbers, so we have some members that have come up on 10 years, so they're gonna be required to be replaced, and it's up to 2,500, $2,300 to outfit completely. So it's, yeah, it's worth the spin there.
The equipment maintenance and repair is somewhat of a slight increase? It seems like you're trending online to be on budget for this year. Is there some, is that again reflective of inflationary costs for parts and service? Is that adequate?
Yeah, that's, we're going up to 18, so, yeah, that includes our, our road test for CPAs and all the equipment that needs to be annual tested. So, and then you have repairs and so forth, that comes in with that, so holding that.
Do you think that'll be adequate?
Should be adequate.
I'm kind of monopolizing this.
No, it's fine.
Sorry. The medical supplies, are there some purchases coming in, because you're well below budget?
Yeah, no, it should be, it's also not right within the $100, so I should be in this for whatever disposable supplies should be coming up.
Vehicle repair, going back to the same question, is that adequate, 45,000?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's hard to predict, you know, if we have any major repairs that can come up, any issues, but, you know, for diesel, they go down for service, manual service and inspections, having about $1,000 per rail, so, to get into that cost, then if there's any significant repairs, that's one of the reasons why we, you know, obviously, like, we go with the maintenance. Yeah, that's hard.
I know some of it's hard.
Yeah, it's hard to predict.
But in terms of what you've got for a regular schedule and what you're anticipating?
Yeah, I mean, that's adequate.
Training and education is, as of the end of November, is roughly 40% behind below budget, which is great in some ways, but you're, you're holding that number, is there, is there training coming up?
Yes, yep, I just spent, most of that, we're probably gonna, we're giving most of that, so we have training come up on the 17th of this month, outside sources come in, we had some others go outside, do some training, so yeah, it's that money.
Kind of level up. Telephone, I think it's telephone and internet, no, it's radios and radio repairs, you're over budget. Do you think the increase to 5,000 is adequate for next year?
No, I believe so, yeah, we, we got it to some, we actually ordered paging equipment for the station, it was supposed to be in 2021, that actually came in this year, so we kind of got built a little bit, and we had to do some removals, or the antennas on the station, so we had to do some stuff around, but we should be okay with that, the radio repairs. We began our radios, we have new radios coming in, so we should be okay with that.
Thank you. In any other year, 7% would seem high, but in this year, thank you. Looks like you guys work pretty hard.
Yeah, with Michael and Julius and then Dan, they have worked a bunch of those hours, so.
Thanks.
We don't want to forego some of the other stuff until maybe after, since we have all our special guests here.
Yeah, one, one half.
Yeah.
Thank you. You done with the AV stuff?
For now, it's 2.114. You're not gonna be able to hide back there for any longer.
Well, we appreciate the county coming in and the losing iPhones coming in. What precipitated our request for you to come in was, we received a letter from the county with regard to offering backup services to the town. backup services to the town. And simultaneous with that, Michael mentioned to us that there was some concern on your part, that we might be looking in a different direction. But we wanted to make it clear that we were not. It was unsolicited, to my knowledge, it was unsolicited. We appreciate it, but we have a contract with you, and it's our understanding as of now that we're going to continue with that. But, but in fairness, and we owe an obligation to the citizens of Swansea to entertain all parties that are providing service. So we asked Chris and Jack to come in and expand on what they were doing. But again, we wanted to reassure you that where we are. Thank you guys for coming in. Appreciate it. So would, would you be able to expand on that letter? We, we had a nice presentation from you all a couple of weeks ago upstairs, and I, I think the takeaway from that was a, was a different perspective, in the sense that we truly did not anticipate receiving that proposal, didn't recognize that it would be coming. So we do appreciate the improvement on the corner. If you want to take advantage of a pilot opportunity, we'd be happy to talk to you about that. But it is a beautiful project that you put together. Good looks bright.
No, we're excited by it. You know, it's, it's come together rather quickly, and a lot of that has to do with the people sitting around this table. So we appreciate your support and getting us what we needed to, so we can move forward continually. And as of December 14th, we're up, we're certified, licensed, all that, all that you need to have to be able to do services. Currently, we have a signed contract with Cheshire Medical Center to be their primary service for inter-facility transfers. We, in a three-week period, have, and correct me if I'm wrong, again, introduce Chief Michael Spain and Deputy Chief Chad Butler, and of course, you know Commissioner Wozmack. In about a three-week period, we're right around 90 transfers. And I think it was 88, to be exact.
Correct.
And in that short period of time, also, we've, we're at 25 for staffing, of which 12 are medics, and have four more interviews tomorrow with our goal to get to 28, which is, I applaud my HR staff, the chief, the deputy chief, and our finance department to be able to get that up and running and the way they have. We are based currently out of Maplewood, and have our two ambulances up there. We'll have a third ambulance next week. We have three others arriving in late January. And our first wave of hirings was to get our goal to 28. And Chief can talk to why, why that is. And so we are possibly a day away from reaching that goal. I have the contract with numbers in there, so that you have where we're coming from, as we've said from the get-go, it would be, you know, we understand that's already contracts in place, but we're introducing ourselves. That's, that's what we're doing. And, and because of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, we have the ability to work towards where we think we need to be with the services over a three-year period. It would be a three-year contract. So that's what we would be, we'd be looking at. But again, we understand everything that is involved with all this, but we wanted to introduce ourselves. Again, and thank you for a few weeks ago for inviting us down to, to just give you an update in the, in the history of where we came from to where we are today. But yeah, the facility on the corner of Lake Street and, what is that, Manana Highway, is, it's the six-way garage. It's got the administrative building with the sleeping quarters and sitting room and a locker area upstairs, and kitchenette and chiefs area, the deputy chief area, and some work areas for people to work in. In the White House, that's part of that will be, again, for traveling nurses, for our nursing home, and for our Department of Corrections. And they'll actually pay rent for that. And so that will be a revenue stream for us, for that. There'll be four individuals, possibly five, that could be staying there. We already have two houses that I'm renting in the city of Keene and Westverland, where, where we have about nine traveling nurses currently. In this day and age, that's, you have to be aggressive about getting the people here, one way or the other. And this is working for us. So if you want, I can hand out the contract. If you want to know anything more about that, Jack can talk to the numbers. And then any questions you may have?
While he's doing that, I'll just say, we, we absolutely respect you have a contract with Dulusio. We're not trying to put anybody out of business. This is an option. You're going to compare the prices. You should stay with Dulusio as long as they're able to service you, from my, my point of view. That's, that's not what we're doing here. We're prepared to offer you alternatives to 911 service if that works for you. We're prepared to get added to a run card for 911 support or backup if that's helpful to you. And if it's not, then don't. You guys get to make the decision. We're, we're now an option out there. We're an alternative. We're clearly going to be doing the inter-facility transfers. And for any town that wants to entertain the 911 stuff, we'll, we're happy to make a proposal.
So, and we do have the, I, I forgot to mention with the, with the, at the end of the day, by August of this coming year, we'll have eight ambulances. And we'll have, we already have the intercept that's outside, I think, actually, Chief, did you drive it down?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And so we're, where we need to be to support every scenario that possibly is out there. And it's not just, what we have found, it's not just about the Dulusio's contracts and all of those, and with their services, it's about the community, it's over 22 towns, and they have need be the city of Keene. So, you know, run cards are important, too, in the scheme of things.
Do you want to turn it off the chief?
Yes, chief, go ahead. Do you have anything, any, any, any current numbers or anything?
Actually, just to add, Chris had brought up, we've done 88 calls so far in 23 days, so it's about four, four calls a day. Our staffing and our vehicles, I want to address, as was said, we've got two ALS vehicles functioning 24 hours a day. We have a third one, I'm going to say right around Christmas, by the time we get certified. We've got a, the Interceptor, which is the paramedic-equipped vehicle, that's going to be up probably in about a week or so. And, and equipped. Then we've got my car, and then we've got a car for the deputy chief coming. But I think more importantly, the model we've put together is we need 28 people, and we're there, pretty much. Because when I say that, we're at 25 employees right now. I can tell you tomorrow, I've got six, oh, I'm sorry, five, five interviews tomorrow. Out of that breakdown of personnel, we've got 12 medics. I am interviewing medics tomorrow. We've got, I think, eight or nine AEMTs, and the rest are EMTs. So what we're looking to do is really kind of an, an all-encompassing, not only to do the inter-facility transfers, also the 911, but also education. I think one of the best things to bring about in assisting people is education. With that being said, we, I was going to interview the coordinator for our education coordinator today. Unfortunately, the gentleman had a medical emergency in his family, so that's pushed off to next week. But by the end of the year, starting next year, we want to come around. What with our program, we want to set up, it's training of our personnel, it's training of fire department personnel, it's also training of the citizens. So that our goal is, by the American Ambulance Association, to have someone trained once the call goes in within nine months. Now, with that being said, given the complexity of our county with just one station, that's going to be completely impossible. But we're working toward that. How do we do that? Is, as I said, educating the public, working with fire departments to see if it's possible, the possibility of housing and ambulance in there. But when we're all said and done, what the model is, is to have at least three paramedic units of 24 hours a day. I'm talking ambulances, I'm sorry, just to make the clarification. At least one fly car, paramedic equipped. Two of the other vehicles would be AEMT minimum, and then possibly one or two, depending on how it works out as far as basic vehicles. So with that being said, that's really what we're looking for. And to emulate what Chris and Jack said, we're not looking to ace anybody out. We're here to provide a service when, and, and with the complexity of medical emergencies, by the year 2030, the 7% or 10, 8% of medical emergencies that we're seeing right now, because some of us, not you guys, but I'm getting older, and it's going to be about 20%, if, if, if not more. With that being said, the, you know, we're all living life due to pharmaceuticals that are coming from our doctor and the Walgreens. But when we get sick, it's sicker, we're, we have a higher acuity rate. So it's, it's just kind of one of those generational things that we're having to work through. So to get back, what do we have now? We are staged at Maplewood, which is very far from here. We did get the certificate of occupancy. That was given on the 5th, which is just a couple of days ago. We're in the process of doing the final walkthrough. There are some hiccups here and there that, that the contractor's making good. We're already starting to move the furnishings in. The goal is by this time next week, to have our vehicles there as well as our staff.
So, could you, just a quick question, just for clarification. When you mentioned percentages, 7%, 8%, 20%, 2030, what, what did that mean?
Okay. What has been proven is, it was in 2019, 7% of the population, 78% will ever use a, an ambulance, an EMS service through their whole life, lifespan. Right now, because, and it came out of big data in the book, that they're projecting, given with the medical issues, people living longer, that that number will be at about 20% by the year 2030, of people that will have used ambulance. Now, is it all going to be ALS? Nobody knows. Is it all going to be, you know, where they need IVs, where they need medication? I don't know. This is just all encompassing. I, I do know at the National Fire Academy and the fire administration, that they are working with the hospital association to try to come up with some figures. But it's too premature at this point to really give a breakdown. I appreciate that. Thank you. Sorry, Chris.
No, and, and just in the, in the handle that I gave you, on the back last page are the numbers that we're reflecting. As we've told you in the past, and we've been very honest to any and every town that we've gone into, that when we looked at where we needed to be to run the programming that we needed to run, that things needed, in our minds, things needed to change, and there needed to be a price differential that, that showed, reflected that. And, and so, but we can get you there over a period of time because of the monies that we can use through the ARPA funding. So, and if you have any questions pertaining to the numbers, we can, we can address that, too.
I think the one, one concern that we have was the fluidity of the numbers. And is that, is this the same proposal that we received?
My recollection is the number's the same. I think the formatting and the language of the contract got tightened up a bit. But, yeah, basically, as we said probably two years ago at this point, the rates fundamentally need to double over some period of time to get to a sustainable point for the 911 service. And so we took a look at five years of run data. We took a look at, like, the number of runs by town, in the county, by payer source. We did calculations on the staffing profile that we're looking at to keep the ambulances going 24/7 and to pay for them, even if the phone doesn't ring. And allocated that across all of the towns of the county that, that might be approachable, that aren't currently being served by Keene, to come up with a price of sustainability to keep it, to keep it going. Because as you may remember, the delegation said, you can get into this, but it's got to pay for itself. And it can't fall on the towns that aren't using the service. And so we've spent, I'll probably say, a couple hundred hours with a variety of people that have been in the ambulance business for decades, to scope out financial profiles to make sure that the costs are covered. We don't need to make money at this. We need to cover the expenses. We need to build in a certain amount for capital replacement over the years, you know, replacing ambulances every five or seven years or something. In general, our intention would be, as we do now with the county budget, we produce a quarterly budget report, so everybody could see the revenues and expenses of this particular department, along with every other department. And we would certainly lower the prices depending upon how things are, or make adjustments and walk down the road together. But the idea being, all of the costs and the revenues would be transparent, and recognizing that it's an enterprise fund that simply needs to pay for itself.
Just to add on, and I was remiss, I just addressed, in the next couple of months, by this time next year, we're probably going to be employed of about 55 to 60 personnel. Because when we're looking, we, just because we have vehicles, we also have to staff. And for each vehicle, because we're doing the four platoon system 24 hours a day, they'll work one 24-hour tour, off four, work another 24-hour tour, and off two. In order to staff the ambulances, and it takes, for each ambulance, it takes eight people to do on, on the four platoon system. So you can do the numbers after that. But we're, we're going to be definitely over 50 employees by this time next year, if not in a few months.
And then Chief, Chief, one of the things that's been interesting to me is, and one of the concerns we had is, we didn't want to decimate other services in the area, because we're only as strong as Rescue Inc., we're only as strong as Jeffrey, and whoever else is out there. And 85% of our hires have been outside of Cheshire County that are coming in. And we've got people now that are moving back, either work, live here, and work outside the area, and want to be back here, and not have to drive the distances, or they're now looking at homes and moving into this community, which is exciting to me at a time when we, we need that. We're, Cheshire County has been a county where we lost, in our last census, lost population, so.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, the other thing, it's short of a full contract for backup services. As, you know, you've expressed many times, you're, you know, you're here to help. What are some ways that could complement our existing operations with Dulusio and the fire department and Keene Fire? You know, what are, what are some ideas that could complement it, short of a full contract for backup services?
Let me start real quick, and Chief, you can jump in. From our standpoint, I can, I can tell you, like, with Westverland, they just, you know, were able to pass their, their new fire department. And, you know, we were able to help them with a few things. One is, we had an old generator at the nursing home that they were able to, and now utilize for their facility in town hall at the same time, because it's huge. But more importantly, we have a grant team, and we've been sending them grants to be able to pursue. And our grant teams can help support that on certain levels. I will never sit here and tell you that the grant team can come in and write your grant for you, because they have, we, in the county, we have a grant team of two. They handle 41 grants and over $14 million worth of grants coming in. So that is one way. And that leads into my next thing, is that we were able to land a $200,000, that the chief touched on, a $200,000 grant for education. And it's not about the counties utilizing it for just themselves, the county. It's, it's about communities, about every town. How can we work together, get the chiefs together and say, how best can we utilize this opportunity? Because it's frustrating to me to know that two years ago, the state of New Hampshire sent about, I think it was about close to $700,000 up to Berlin, which they needed up there, I get it, to help develop an educational center for, for their, their fire and EMT programming. We've got the same issue here, okay? You know, we're a rural community. Outside of Keene, we're a rural community, and we need to build our educations, educational system here. So our EMTs, our EMTs, our AMTs, our paramedics, whatever it may be, can we get programming? But not just stop there. Can we go into communities and do other levels of education when it comes to this? So that's something that I've asked the chief to, to work on and really get the other chiefs together. Here, where they're, where they're struggling with education, and is, is there a way that we can develop something here? We've also reached out to River Valley Community College, because the Lake Region Community College has an EMT program, educational program there. And can we, you know, can we start bringing something like that down? bringing something like that down, down in this region? And, you know, with now with the partnership that we have with Keene State College, because we're, we're, we, uh, through the ARPA money, we gave Keene State two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, uh, to help us develop a LNA to LPN to RN program. Because if we don't have a feeder system, we know what we have. We at least need to attempt to build a feeder system here, and really get, get, have them do internships, and we partnered with Cheshire Medical Center too on this, to do their, do their, um, uh, what is it, when you go into the hospital, and they go, and they can go up to Maplewood, and they can do their clinicals, they can do their clinicals in there, and maybe we can get an RN or an LPN. Right now, we're all doing, which are stealing from each other. And so we have to at least attempt to do that. And so that's something that we started, and we're going to look at other grants to expand that. Well, the same thing can be done here. We need to, you know, we have Keene High School, we have the Cheshire Career Center. Is there more that we can do in, in getting, we know they have the fire service program, but the EMT program, is there other ways, the safety program at Keene State College, is there other ways to develop off that? So there's a lot of connections that, that we have, that we think we can bring to the table for, for the surrounding communities. Because this is what we've heard from the chiefs, we've talked to the chiefs on multiple occasions around the need for the future, that they're, you know, that they're really struggling to get people to volunteer, to sign up, to, you know, to, whatever it may be. So we need to do, we need to be proactive and try to build that system to feed, not just the county. This isn't just about the county, it's about all departments out there, because it's EMT right now, but the fire services are struggling just as hard too. You talk to Chief DeRozier in Harrisville, you know, a lot of times, if there's a situation, he's there. And that's it. And we can't continue down those type of roads. We need to build our future. So that's something we can do, Chief. Other things that I'm not mentioning?
You guys want to talk about the mutual aid backup and whatever?
Okay. Let, let's kind of do a couple of things. This morning, I was invited to the Kiwanis. I was invited to Kiwanis, explain to them what the program that we're putting together for education. I would tell you, many of the individuals this morning at breakfast were and did live in Swansea. And I said, we would come out, we would do education, we could, we would do CPR, basic first aid, uh, et cetera, to show, because we all can't do it together. I mean, I'm sorry, we have to do it together. Sorry about that. With, now with that being said, as we talked about, in my past life, I developed the fire basic program, that we had a hundred percent pass at the state level, and actually out of the two-hundred-and-fifteen, over two-hundred are now working as career firefighters. Uh, we did the same thing with the EMT program. I've taught at the paramedic level, et cetera. So we're looking to make this a global approach to healthcare in the pre-hospital care setting. Now, we've talked to Dr. Swosie, and, uh, I've said I'm going to be meeting with the chiefs, because I don't want to superimpose what I think is need. I want to hear from the chiefs. In fact, what do you think we need? So the education coordinator can, can sit down, we can map out, I'd like to do it at least in a year in advance, so you can go, whatever department we're at, whatever location we're at, anybody in the area can come to us. You can come either to our location, we can go to the firehouses, you know, we can go just about anywhere. But this is to be open. And personally, I, I, I don't care what department, what ambulance agency you work for, we're here as a, a global type of umbrella to make pre-hospital care, uh, in sync with the hospital, which is ultimately going to mean more, 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 more productive lives saved. So that, you know, it's truly kind of putting it together. Now, with the mutual aid, yes, here, here's the basic philosophy, and I come from a very strong mutual aid program, uh, that the idea is, is to get people there as quick as possible and train. With that being said, uh, with mutual aid, the time a call comes in, and, and I hear on the radio, you guys are Swansea or whoever, will call and say, we need this type of emergency at this location, the fire department's responding, and Deluzio's calling. You know, uh, so that's being done, it's trying to do a simultaneous approach. So mutual aid is the key. There is, even where I came from, which was very rich in firefighters and paramedics, one department could not handle. I can speak for that, when you look at the city of Chicago, because I was one of the two chiefs that went in to the city of Chicago, and because we covered the west side of O'Hare. And the city of Chicago could not handle everything. So that's our real global aspect. Now, when you look at it, we're going to have under the umbrella of CCEMS, we're going to have the IFPs, we're going to have the nine one one, bifurcated down to ambulances as well as fly cars. We're going to have the educational component. When we bifurcate that down, we're going to look at community education, professional education, and future education. Because to me, is, when I have the big one, I don't want someone to look around and go, gosh, I wish I knew what to do, or what, what were those acronyms? It wasn't CPR, because I don't know that. So that's really the goal, is to enhance the system, to add to the system, so we get a better outcome. And how do we do that? We do that with education, we do that with cooperation, and we do that with a unified approach. Now, I would tell you, with, with myself, I, I currently have an apartment in Keene, and I wish you all would bring the prices down here, so my wife, you know, doesn't have a heart attack when they send her the prices. But, uh, I, I will be responding. Now, I've got, I've just got my state EMT, I let my national go, I'm retesting to get my national. We've got the D, the DC that'll be responding as well, but we're there to add on to. It's kind of an all-call type of situation. So to help out.
And, and just to go back to the grants real quickly, we'll, we'll, um, we get, we, we get grants all the time, and if you guys are looking at something, and you, what we have found is, when we can team up, we have a better chance at the grant. So if there's things that we can do together, and we can help, and, and let, I mean, early on, I mean, Robbie approached us around IV pumps and, um, and ventilators. And we had the monies through the CARES Act to be able to give that, and we did, because it was the right thing to do. We're, we're hoping to continue that, that kind of mentality. If you have some need, how do we, how do we, can we talk about it, see if there's ways to, to, to answer those issues? That's something that, that I've learned, I think Michael, you probably know this, the county government in, in, in town, we, we have this opportunity to go after certain things that sometimes others may not. And so we should take advantage of that, because others are. And we, you know, we get left behind if we don't. So we'll be, we're, we've always been aggressive about things, but if there are needs out there, let us know, and let's see if we can work together on them.
For, from my point of view, not as a chief, but just as a guy, in terms of mutual aid, if you need something, call us. You know, you, you get to decide where on the run card at mutual aid we are, if at all. If you don't put us on the run card, we're not going to get dispatched. So, um, put us fourth, put us fifth, I don't know, figure that out. But it would be kind of a shame to have us down the street and not be asked to respond if you need it. You don't need it, that's fine, but at least we'd be available. Because if we're not on the run card, we're not going to get notified that you need help. Just on the mutual aid front, no, no money involved, just like every other community, just like every other mutual arrangement.
So you have MOUs or contracts with the other agencies?
We certainly could do that. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know that everyone has an MOU if they just get added to the run card, but.
I prefer it's one of those.
What's that?
I was throwing out the other acronym, so I figured it's true.
We'll do whatever it takes to reach some understanding of what we, what we can do for you. I mean, if it's, if it's mutual aid, just to help out, if there's some, some sort of event and you're out resourced, you need more resources, let us know, give us a call, pay us out. Otherwise, we'll just do, do our thing in town.
So for those who don't know, what is a run card?
Uh, well, the chief could probably describe that, but a mutual aid, when a call comes in, then to dispatch somebody, they have, used to be, the old days, because I remember the old days, flip cards, card acts. And it would say, well, if there's a ambulance call or a fire call in Swansea, here's what you do first, here's who you tone, here's who you tone second, here's who you tone third, if it's, you need tanker, here are the tankers, here's where they come from. So the whole plan is out there. Mutual aid's not making it up. They have a plan that the chief, uh, sets up, that says, here's the resources that I need in my town for various emergencies. And so mutual aid just looks at that card, and they read off the queues, and they tone people out. Uh, and the more people that are on the run card, and the worse the situation is, they've got endless resources to tone people out to get an appropriate response. So who doesn't get toned out during mass casualties or severe things? People that aren't on the run card. So doesn't matter where we are, you guys get to decide that.
For the most part, though, mutual aid, the cards are based on fire response, correct?
Yeah, they have, we do have, like, EMS response, but I think a lot of it is mostly mass casualty kind of, when we run into a situation where we.
Dispatch instructions.
Yeah, basically, when we run into a problem, that's more, more problems than resources we have, that's where that comes into play and starts pulling in, then they get us the deleted items.
Look at the paper version of the run card, the fire section's at the top, and there's a block down here for EMS, specialty units like OHRV, Russian, things like that, and so on, it lays out, who's, you know, like on Swansea's run card, it says DL, DIL, and then KFD, and then.
Yeah.
And it says the nearest, the number of the town. I think like Winchester's next is forty, and Troy is thirty-four. And that's all set by the chief, because he's the authority under jurisdiction of it.
But, so I'm thinking that maybe some type of contract between transport agencies, some agreement.
Yes.
From that standpoint, because you guys are billing for service to the, to the customer.
You know, like you asked, our agreements with, you know, we haven't, we, in the state of New Hampshire, I don't know if anybody knows, but the state of New Hampshire EMS is not considered essential service, only fire and police are. And so the RSA's that pertain to mutual aid in the state of New Hampshire don't apply EMS. So, you know, tomorrow, if, you know, if you called Rescue Inc. because none of us were available, Rescue Inc. can say, okay, we're coming, but it's fifty thousand dollars, you know, for that one call, they, not that they would do that, you know what I mean? So there's no requirement, unlike fire and police, if you call, if Keene calls Swansea, as long as Swansea's available, they have to come. Um, so we did several years ago with the city of Keene, the first, and I believe still the only, EMS mutual aid agreement in the state, and basically we went with the city of Keene, and said, you cover the towns that we cover, and we will cover the towns that you cover, and there'll be no additional charge. And literally list the towns that each agency covers on that contract, and it describes exactly what we'll back each other on, and that's, and actually Chief Harbaugh can comment on that, so I just hear. Very quietly, so we.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Michael.
At this time.
Well, we appreciate you all coming in. Thank you very much.
Where are you sitting? Where are you for breakfast tomorrow?
I know, we should figure that out.
I walk into Hillsborough County Commissioners Meeting, I sit down, I look, and he's sitting there, I'm like.
Do a stop.
Mine's why, mine's Wiccan Hall.
It is a nice hall there, though. Not quite as nice as upstairs, but it is a nice facility.
It's all right. You guys kicked it here.
We had a good committee on this.
You did.
It was a very nice room.
Yep. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Steel cage.
If you don't see it anywhere, you're fine. We need the Eastern Field Stream with, uh, you guys.
Oh, yeah. That's drunk, man, you seen it?
I heard it on the radio.
Oh, are you a chief? Nice to see you. Isn't that good?
Well, yeah, it could be revoked.
All right. Appreciate it.
I think the chief is, yes, relax.
Yeah.
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 That's Brandon, he's leading everybody.
One of the things the chief was tasked with was trying to find some innovative ways to either add more coverage, respond to more calls, respond more footages, or look at Julius Johnson, there's a couple different options. What's going to discuss is the verbal alternatives, uh.
I can't answer earlier in the year. I can't decide where I'm here. So it's an eye chart, mate. Looks like this, you're doing something with this stuff, huh?
Well, that was just kind of a version, so, um, these are, if you, if you want to go to the third page here, what I'm proposing is, um, we want to extend our hours of coverage to, you know, we have the weekend shifts at Perdian, and we want to extend our hours of coverage from five to, uh, ten.
Before you go much further, is the burgundy here the pink up here?
Yes, it is, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so we wanted to extend our, our, our coverage to ten per diem, okay, so, and the main objective is to bring Deputy Chief West, again, I'm going to request the board to consider his, um, part-time position to go to full-time, so we'll have three full-time, um, personnel. We have to forgive Julius, we call his officers, we're hired personnel.
Go together.
Yeah. So we, um, that's the main, and, you know, actually.
I made sure I didn't know that.
So the two, those are the two objectives. So we want, I want to first and foremost transition Chief West into a full-time position, uh, and again, extend our hours to our Perdian, our department members, and that would be between five to ten. We extend our coverage over the name. If you look at some of our peak times that, uh, I let Brandon, you want to explain a little bit more with the, our peak time and hours?
Yeah.
Some of our calls that we're getting, I think it's the last page is the hours, the second to last page would be, uh, daily.
So this is, um, a little confusing, because we changed that software in the middle of the, middle of the year. So starting in, in August, we started on the new DSL platform. The big, you know, the big blue ones here, the last two pages are from our, basically January to July thirty-first. And, you know, because all the.
Overall calls?
All, all, all calls, yep. And it, and it breaks it down to this, one with the many bars, with hours of the day. And then the bigger one with the, the days, and as you can see, the spikes run heaviest between, I believe that's, uh, seven AM up to, and it starts to dwindle off around ten. If you want to look at it, yeah, four o'clock, uh, six, yeah, around six o'clock, you see that big spike. So during this, I guess you would say, bracketed area of the, the hours, that's when the majority of those calls came in, and those hours. And that's, I believe, around six hundred and eighty calls from January first to July, so that's just the hours. And then when you back up to that second to last page, it's basically Sunday through Saturday, and it just basically shows that, like, Monday is a big heavy, majority of those calls came in on a Monday, and then Tuesday, and then so on and so forth, and it kind of levels out, and it's really pretty, you know, for the rest of the country.
What do you think contributes to?
What do you think contributes to Monday and Tuesday being significantly higher than, especially Monday?
Honestly, I don't know, because when I rerun this on the new program, Wednesday became a heavier, heavier day. So I wish I could combine the two, I think all of them, and we just see it kind of like anything.
The national trend is like Tuesday is a business.
Yeah, so there's no rhyme or reason why I couldn't, I guess, where I go on the call that couldn't be that easy more. So and then same kind of time of day, it's just you see the big spike in the, with the noon. Yeah, between noon and noon, so. So this would be our highest call volume would be in that light green, was full-time during pretty much. And then two, the paid-on call, so that would be, that would be our kind of immediate level of call volume.
That's the 5:30 to 7:30?
Yeah, yeah. That is, that's what I remember, Wednesday, that's on the week's program. The next year we do is one, we'll be using just one ESO, one per, we split, the night, August, we started with ESO, got rid of fire, so a lot of our data is on the playbook, so it's good. Going from this man.
They tend to tread the same, because I take tread the same, if you look at them overall things.
So the option we talked about would be kind of equal to, we go to Sundays at Perdian, eight to four, so that five to 10, then either the paid-on call or the same as Perdian, cooperate, not a station. The paid-on call would be we got people on standby, and if they come in for a call, there's a certain wage, 50 bucks or whatever the wage was, we'd have a sell, they're going to be ready to respond from home, so they're guaranteed to get a response.
And they would be compensated regardless of whether a call came.
They would come in and immediately go to their pay, rate of pay, so depending on whether they're staff or classes.
If there were no call, they would get the Perdian.
Yeah, they would get that.
So if you want me to speak a little bit about that, that portion of it, so, so I would have been sat with the, with the fire crew on Monday and really kind of narrowed down what we call is the most impactful way to expand the services while offering it during the most conducive timeframe. And so what we had noticed was that, and you check, check the charts, 6:00 AM up until closer to 6:00 PM, that 12-hour shift is when we have the most calls, and then some of it's actually, I'd say dwindled, but it started to decrease relatively slowly up until 10:00 PM, and then it drastically cut down. So the important timeframes really was that 6 till 10 timeframe. So we know obviously with labor laws and what the restrictions on that goes down to is that if we keep it at 8:00 AM, go towards a typical eight-hour shift, and then move it five days a week, per the request of these guys, that would let, keep our most heavily houred calls during the week covered by the three full-time employees. Now, the on-call portion of it, which would occur afterwards, is set at a $5 an hour rate. So you'll be on, you'll be paid the $5 an hour up until you receive that call, and then you'll be paid, like we had said, the rate to respond to that call. And then once the call ends, then you would go back to your on-call status until eventually your end of shift occurs. We didn't want to extend that all the way throughout the end of the night, only because at this point we don't see the call volume to do such. You'll notice that in the charts, it does depict what our estimated call volume would be throughout the year within those timeframes, and this would allow us to, I believe, with something like 600 calls, that we would actually be able to service throughout the year that we're missing currently. Now, I say missing only because these numbers are based off of the calls that we respond to, it doesn't correlate with the, you know, delusional response to the calls, we wouldn't see those stats, is that, is that right?
No, no, that was, if we're not tagged into the call, so at the end, like if one of our fire department doesn't respond, they usually tag it, so it comes into, comes on to our cat. If they, the dispatcher fails to add that little placeholder, we don't get to see it. So those are, I track them differently because they still come through on our, on our responding app. So we still pick them up that way, and I have to just kind of keep tally, those off to the side. So that's what, when those are missed, no, the rest of these numbers are everything that's ever been toned in that regard. So there's probably in there from 50 to 75 throughout the year, they get just, they're like not on books, if you will, somebody went, it's just they didn't tag our town piece into it, so we don't, we don't get that information fed to us, so it just doesn't track, we can't really know about it. So other than just make a note that on this day, at this time, there was a call. So I try to keep those, that strategy for that, so.
I think it's important to emphasize that we're seeing a large trend away from individuals that are volunteer responding to these calls on a regular basis. There needs to be some level of incentive to ensure that they want to respond. And if you're on-call, the expectation is that you will respond because you know you're getting a paycheck. And so some of the other local communities are also transitioning to this same level of paid-on-call status and seeing success with it. I used it in Deering for, actually for police, not for fire, but we saw that a little success. So I think we could say that, given the scenario at hand, if our goal is to expand hours afterwards, offer more end-of-the-day stuff, which call volume is showing that there is calls there that do help. And this is one of those scenarios where it allows us to do such and use Perdian on-call funds to do so. That's kind of the gist of, the actual, that was the reasoning behind, and we're emphasizing that was why we got to this particular point.
Like, yeah, they just answered a call just now, I've under it's phone, around the other side, so.
You can send this to me so I can print it out with. Get larger.
I chose blue for some of the cells because like when I'm looking at it all day, if it's white, it turns, and it's not printer friendly.
So what's the bottom line?
So the bottom line impact is about 125, is that right, to whatever we find at the end? Because that includes the full-time employee, and that includes the on-call rates as well. You'll notice that on that piece on the side, it breaks out what the on-call impact is, and what the, 127, is that right?
Yeah, 127, 692.
So, yeah, sorry. So.
Does it include benefits and retirements as well?
Yes, absolutely. I went to Teresa and I heard her give me all the benefit packages, there's that piece there, we can send it to electronically as well, and you can see those numbers calculated out. Majority of that, as you know, is in the full-time piece of it, but that full-time piece of it addresses our more higher on-call hours, or demand hours, excuse me. So that was where that was focused.
Going back when I first got out of college, and I still remember the shifts that I worked, we had a, it was a seven-day program, and as managers, we have what were referred to as rotating shifts, so there was some overlap. Basically, I'm wondering if that, if any kind of a structure was looked at that would vary the hours so that over the course of seven days, there'd be at least one full-time person, one full-time fireperson now on, on site at any one time, as opposed to the block of 8 to 5, or 7:30 to 5:30, whatever it is, Monday through Friday.
Yeah, we did, we did look at a model like that, traditionally, you know, it's your staff, it's your command staff, it's your administrative staff, they're working part of the week. So, you know, traditionally, in most places, you know, Chief of PD, Chief of GTW, they're not, they're not kind of staggered like that. Most fire departments are, you know, the administrative staff works, they're eight to five, and they're a week, so the weekends are on other supervisors. We did look at that, I mean, I felt like this would still, I mean, as we kept it the way we're doing now, we have our members on that cover on Saturdays, Sundays. It's, I looked at kind of the way the rotating as the chief, you know, likes to have the two days up to a week, but at the same time, missing a lot of administrative things, you know, meetings with vendors and so forth, that I feel that it is more important to be there during the week. So not that I would be opposed to working Saturday, Sunday, because, well, it's not Saturday.
We're here around anyway.
Yeah, so, no, we did, we went all those, that scenario, that model, I still felt that this, this would still be a stronger model. So again, you know, bringing Brandon in, I mean, you know, he's, he's a tremendous asset, I believe I brought this up last year, and to, which is unique to the department because he's actually, I believe, the only one that drives every piece of lab rat, well, a couple guys drive it, other things, but he just obtained this year, Brandon and I obtained an inspector one, and he just, which is a very significant course fire investigator. So he adds to our kind of level of capabilities and training, and again, as a paramedic, I like to have him there Friday as a week, and gives us the capability, paramedic, deliver paramedic service, and those peak times. So, you know, I think that it would, it would be beneficial to the town, certainly the department, for that full-time. But, yeah, to answer the question, I don't, I don't think it would be, you know, that much of an impact, or any impact whatsoever, as far as operationally, if we had a little bit of schedule like that.
Glad you looked into it.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions, anything to add? Sly? All right, well, we're going to get the blow up. We appreciate you doing it because obviously this was something we were passionate about a few months back, and it looks like you put quite a bit of work into it, Julius, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
All right. What's next?
EMS Advisory Committee, George.
Did everybody have a chance to read it?
Thoughts or suggestions? Just, I don't know if we want to just limit it to five, only because people's schedules, you know, sometimes everybody can't make it.
Ken doesn't like big committees.
Ken's not on this one, is he?
No, he's not.
He's official. He's busy tomorrow night though, at the planning board.
That's true.
Tomorrow night's a big night.
Well, hey, well.
That's right.
Oh, well.
No, they're going to be on water, not well.
That's right. How about the water? I think the, the interest in a, in a five-member committee was, was more the nimbleness of it and making sure that the people that were on it were ready and willing to do the work that was going to be needed to pull this together in a, in a short period of time. Two, two things I would put out were, one, I think the, the composition should change, I think it should be one member of the fire department, three members of the public, and one appointed staff member, and I think the board should determine who the, who the chair is, to try to maintain as much impartiality and transparency as possible. For you all, just so you know where this came from, Bill will recall a conversation that we had where I spoke specifically with regard to the ambulance itself, not the service, but the ambulance. When we, when we approved purchasing the ambulance in April of 2020, it was a set of circumstances that I know I'd never experienced before, and I don't know that too many others here did either. So we, we decided to move forward with the purchase of the ambulance with the understanding that when things settle down, that there'd be an opportunity to reevaluate whether we maintained that piece of equipment or not. And so I had said to Bill that I noticed in the CIP committee schedule that there was projection, and I didn't know what it was, for a second ambulance or replacing the existing one, that personally, if I was still here, that I would need to be convinced that the ambulance, again, not the service, but the ambulance, was, was a requirement. Sly has made, made it clear that he, and I'll let him speak for himself, but he has a vision for the fire department, which is different than what it is today. So it, it seemed, and that revolved around the EMS services, and again, I'll let you explain it, but it, it seemed prudent, given the fact that the, the existing ambulance is going to be coming up for replacement. The county, that's why we had them here tonight, is, is getting involved in the service and, and could be a, a player in our market, that we appoint a committee to advise the select board with regard to the need for, A, EMS services in general, B, having a service ambulance vehicle, C, whether we should get involved in, in billing. I'm not sure if there was anything else, but those were the things that were most prevalent. So I'm looking at it from the perspective that the information will be very helpful, because if it can be shown that we do in fact need a vehicle, I'm all for it. But I don't, I don't want to make a decision as one vote, either yea or nay, without having the data. I, I think that's, that's important, and I think the citizens deserve that. But I'll let Sly go with and explain his, his perspective. And, and again, with where Sly's going, yeah, from, from my perspective, again, I just want to know the data. I, I like what's going on, I think you all provide a tremendous service for the community. We're trying to do things to, to bolster the enrollment, the participation, it's all in support of the department. But where are we going, I think is the, is the overall question. And, and Jack alluded, Lozmac alluded to it a little bit with regard to the need for the services that they're providing. We used to tell your predecessor, make the case. If you're going to talk about ambulance service, make the case, make it to the voters, they're the ones that are going to decide. And it's the same thing with regard to fire service in general, if, if our enrollment is declining, along with other communities, there may be a need for the county to step in. And I, I've been a proponent of that, but it's data, it's data-driven for me. So from my perspective, that's why I'm supportive of the committee, because I'd like to get that information.
One question I have for the committee, if you would like to see one fire department member, so if there's, if they're a town resident but members of the fire department, because I know I'm going to get the question, would they be able to, in the committee as a resident and not a fire department member, or they would, they would take them exempt because they're affiliated with the fire department?
My, my response is just me, my colleagues and Michael should weigh in. I would say they'd be exempt. What we're, what I would like to see is a completely impartial, data-driven report that, that will, will help us. And I, one way or the other, whichever way it comes out, if there's multiple people on the, on the committee that are affiliated with the department, I, I just don't think it's going to give the indication that this is an impartial review. So from my perspective, the answer would be no. If you want to talk with them with regard to your vision for the department.
I've always said that we have to get Station 2 out of the basement of Town Hall, and we're looking at $100,000 a year for 30 years to pay that. So we can't do anything as far as full-time for expanding that, running an ambulance, running two ambulances, billing, transports, none of that stuff, until we get the fire stations figured out. And once we move Station 2 out to a new station, we still have Station 1 that's going to need some major stuff in the next 10 to 15 years, and Station 3 probably ought to be over on Route 10, just as the town expands. So we have a lot of things coming. We've been on hold the last seven, eight years, and there's not enough money to do everything.
Right, so the EMS, as we're running out, again, we're busy enough where we can generate revenue, not that we're in the business model things, but we can generate revenue with transports that, you know, can go back into the general fund. You know, if we, if we dissolve our EMS response, and, you know, like I said before, as a fire chief, I can't sit here and kind of advocate for getting rid of something that does seven that does 7% of what we do. You know, it's basically, we're, you know, like, again, when I first came in, I said, you know, we're basically an EMS, the department that does fires, you know? So that's what we're doing. And to have your, the membership that we have and the dedication we have to have those, uh, majority of the members cross-trained to be able to handle EMS calls and fire calls is an absolute thing. So I think if we dissolve EMS, we would be going backwards, really. But I understand the cost, but where's the cost factor when it comes to serving the community, the people that need the help?
We're gonna have eight ambulances within our kind of staff, 24/7.
You see that?
So, and then we also have Deluzio that night right now runs the calls alone, pretty much. So if the committee can generate data, like Bill said, that proves otherwise, fine. But we're talking about if we paid outside agencies a couple hundred thousand dollars, we'd be ahead of the game based on what we're paying right now.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's almost, to me, it looks like, you know, you have the fire service, you have a, a fire-based EMS service, we already have that established. To me, if you wanted to dissolve that, it's almost like telling the police department, you know, you could still, you police officer or service the public as a policing, but you can't go to the assault, so you can't go to the robbery. You know, that's part of what we do, that's been the fabric of today's fire department. And we are moving ahead of that, so I think-
But you understand that fire department will still go as EMS to do extrications, carries, you know, lift assists, things like that. But as far as the regular medical emergency, you're taking 700 calls off the table. You know, you guys could do 600 calls and get better response and not have, be overwhelmed with what you have now. I mean, what I heard upstairs was that the, uh, people weren't able to go out at night because they were so tired from going out during the day.
Wow.
I mean, if you're talking about taking 70, 80% of the calls away, that are just medical emergencies.
You're relying on, see, here's the big thing. Monday through Friday thing is when everybody has their full-time job. We're relying on those individuals when they're not at their job, if they're available, to answer calls. Everybody's got whatever their hours are for that. Some work 12 hours, some people work 14 hours, some people work an eight-hour shift. We don't know what they work for their full-time job. The reason they're not, I don't know the reason that they're not going, they're not available is basically when the tone goes out at 2:00 AM, if nobody answers that call. It doesn't matter if it's a medical, or it's a fire, or it's somebody's smoke detector going off or a cat in the tree, that's the tone that goes out. If they're, they're not answering it, and nobody's answering it. The medical we're benefiting is we have a contract with Deluzio, they go to that call. They're still relying on us to be able to try to help them. To answer that question, that's what we're working on with this, is trying to do that in a more cost-effective way, because like you said, we've got a lot of things coming down the road that we have to do, and there's a lot of moving parts. We'd love to be able to say, yeah, if we can put this on hold for five years and we'll get back to it, that would be great, it, it's not gonna work anyway, we're gonna have to do multiple things all at the same time, that's just the way the fire department actually operates anyways. So to say, I, I, the committee, I do agree by trying to get to those numbers and those baseline. So if you can throw things out there all day long, if you don't have something to back it up. We work in it every day, so we kinda see that it's a little easier for us to be able to bring in and kinda like, and educate, yes, but I don't think dissolving it would solve that problem because there's still your call and ask. And if you remove a big portion of it and then lose those providers that we do, that we have trained and cultivated and provided as a, as a provider, we ultimately end up moving them down the road because we're not providing that need that they have to do or, you know, work while they join the fire service. Now we're gonna even have less of those two things. I think it, I think it'll actually, to me, I feel like it would compound those issues of things not being managed. And then we're gonna have to rely on them, and of course, more, which, if like anything, if you're gonna do more, you're gonna need, you're gonna pay more for it. And then I think it'll all get money to fight the department down the road. I don't think it'll be like that instant impact. I think there is a, a way of moving, like, these little things like that, just making those self-adjustments, trying to-
This isn't a little thing, it's 150.
Oh, yeah, no, I totally, I, I totally get it, but it, it fills the bulk of some of the need during the middle of the weekend, you gotta hope, when we rely on that call department that they're there. Can't tell you why somebody can't go out one time, can't go out another, right? I know there's times where I'm up at all set, and then I'm not making a call that's, you know, I'm over 45 minutes away. For sure, I'm not, they're not gonna appreciate me trying to make a call that far. So, uh, those are the moving parts that happen with the call department, um, like the per diem stuff, trying to get the, uh, the on-call, trying to guarantee, hey, well, we're gonna give you, you know, we're gonna give you your, your regular rate, but a reduced rate to be available between these hours. And then they should be answering those calls. Now, for the extent after tonight, I, I just think that's a slow, we just gotta, that's one of those things. Instead, just move it in the following, down the road. The ambulance, I can say, working with Deluzio, especially in the last year, our ambulance has paid huge, it's been a huge asset to a lot of calls. Recent trauma with a burn victim, our ambulance was the one that helped him. We ended up doing that. We would like to be able to, once we know that's solidified, we've been working with Deluzio, talking with them, you know, to stimulate and increase, so that they're able to get on our truck, we're able to get on their truck and, and make those things happen. It's like, hey, but we can't predict when all the calls are coming. I always joke, Swansea City City, like, when they get one, they get them all. Um, you know, we landed two helicopters simultaneously, we had a working cardiac arrest and a severe respiratory arrest, all in one, what, an hour and a half timeframe when we're landing two helicopters, that tied up resources. Um, it does happen, and it seems sometimes, it seems like it happens a lot. And then we just go into that lull. But I, I do feel that that ambulance has actually paid off. And remember, and I told you, I was concerned, we were worried, you know, where we prepare for a hurricane, and we end up with a wind in it. Uh, but it, it has proven itself in that accident, that area that we've wanted for, for safety and patient safety and provider safety, that ambulance has actually paid, and it probably helped us with the deep care arrangement and not continuing any people with the COVID and getting through that crisis. And now it's just, it's, it's, it's been paying those, what, 30 times, around 100, 30 times a year, just passively that that ambulance has been needed because of just circumstances. When we get busy, if another town's busy, Keen, even Keen, I don't know if the chief's still here. The other day, they were out on three calls, and they were begging for people to come back because their, their assets were tied up just on those three calls. And then, you know, we get three calls, we obviously are not staff like that. So working with Deluzio as a partner, uh, these are some of the things that we're trying to help mitigate when that, that kind of emergency comes, with communication and, you know, to say, hey, sometimes our ambulance figured out, they got one guy that comes down, and they can team up, and we gotta transport ambulance, and it didn't interfere with any of the other outline things that are going within the emergency system. So that's, that's where I say, I, I would be not in favor of that because I feel like it would kinda undermine us down the road. And then I think, once you get behind, then it's even a harder step to try and get caught back up. Um, you know, counties, you heard them say it, we can't, they can't do it without the other towns. They don't wanna undermine those other services, even ours. They even told us, we would love for you to be able to do that, because they would like to help when we need the help, but be able to, you know, stand back and not have to do that, you know, having to always carry that load. So that, to me, is always reassuring, because then that helps us grow what we have within our community and helping our community, and then have other services behind to be able to, you know, pick up when that, and this, you know, happens. I mean, we can predict them, but, you know, we, we give you graphs, but that's, that's all for the, the course of it. But sometimes, yeah, you know, like I said, one maybe come in.
See what the data shows.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, so we're on a time, um, is a date there for, to bring in the, the data for that, for the committee?
I'd like it by August. Or at least for an initial report, so we could make any determination with regard to the warrant for 2024. So this is something I think we would put together relatively quickly. Yeah?
Michael?
Motion to approve with that amendment you noted on the composition. Do you wanna go to seven or stay at five, or, you know, you said reduce the staff number, which I think is reasonable. But you wanna approve it with that amendment? Or do you wanna wait?
EMS committee.
Which amendment?
Going from two fire members to one?
Yep.
And then, I don't know what you decided on seven versus five, but.
I can go with five, but I'm just telling you, over the course of six, seven months, somebody's gonna-
Find two alternates.
Two alternates.
There you go.
One firefight and two-
Alternates.
Members of the public?
Three.
Three members of the public?
One staff.
One staff member.
And one staff, okay.
And that person is not here. And restricting the, the overall committee to one member of the fire department.
Yes, I can bet.
Regarding, I'm just saying, because Bill brought up the thought, if somebody came on as a, as a quote-unquote regular citizen.
If we want as an alternate, or still just one?
I, I think we're just better off with one, just, just to-
One alternate?
Yeah. No, no, one, one, one fire personnel.
No alternate?
Two alternates.
Oh, two alternates.
Just to try to-
I don't know.
You'll see it when Mike draws it up.
I think that, I think that the chief should, should make people available to the committee. So if there's people on your staff and, and on your, in your department that wanna participate in that way, you know, in terms of the committee asking for information like you all have provided tonight, I think that's certainly appropriate and expected, actually. So, and, and the board would select the chair.
Yeah, that's, that's reflective.
Fine. All right.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Make the motion.
Sir?
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon, appreciate it. Brandon?
Brandon. Thanks for all your work.
So the covered bridge is painted?
Covered bridge is painted, this week. Mike, I have something to say. Let me take the floor for a second. I was told to keep the meeting short, so I'm gonna go on this one. But pretty much the gist is that-
These are the darts. Just make sure you, kinda-
Yep.
Some protection.
So the general gist is that, as the- Pardon your last memo, I'm getting your bits out there. No, sorry. The last memo that Mike had sent out, we had a, basically a cyber incident at the Town Hall, actually, it was at the wastewater treatment plant. The moral of the story is that I worked with IT, we got the computer cleaned up. It will be going back to the wastewater treatment plant. It was a substantive breach, basically, they had full access to the computer, and it was, uh, if the computer was a bit more, say, important, if it was connected to the town server, or if the, uh, computer itself was, say, in the finance office or in the clerk's office, I think there was a real opportunity that there could have been a much more substantial breach. But luckily, it was not the case. I will say that the concern itself right now is minimal in that sense. Other than the fact that I think we really need to do a, um, cybersecurity policy. Michael and I have been working extensively to get that drafted up. So the next time the board meets, I would like to propose that to the board. Uh, the policy will address some levels of training for staff internally, but it'll also address, uh, ways that we can basically beef up our, our security systems. So basically, we'll try to avoid this one happening again, is, is the intent.
There's still a grant out there for water sewer?
Yeah, we actually just talked about that today.
Yeah, so that'll cover water and sewer. I do think that the real concern right now isn't necessarily in the water and sewer, although the incident did occur there. I think it really lies in finance and the clerk's office, because that's where the most money comes in. I know everybody points to Peterborough, but that's exactly the point we're trying to avoid. Do you remember what, how many attacks, Alan, have we had on the daily? It's not, you know, off the top of my head. I mean, it's a substantial number, thousands of attacks. Luckily-
Yeah, they hit someone firewall a day, yeah, I don't remember, but yeah, it was a lot.
So it's, those are blocked on the daily. Currently, the programs we have right now are blocking 98 point whatever, but it's that point two that could be the one that costs us. You know, we wanna increase those numbers almost to 100%, and that's what we're trying to do with this. And training is really the best way, because human, human reaction is what's gonna cause us a, a concern. So anyways, that's, that's kind of the goal, I wanna bring the policy to you guys, and, uh, obviously you'll have the chance to read it and review it, but I'm hoping to get it started by the beginning of the year, and then just begin a process of mandating yearly training, making sure people know how to use emails, make sure people know how to use the software that they're using, that kind of thing. So, that's all.
Password, rather.
Passwords, two-factor verification, that kind of thing.
Preview of what's to come?
I don't know if I need to do that, but I think I can just give you this deal.
Glad you did, and you'll have all this for next Wednesday.
That's all right. Absolutely.
It's pretty much done.
Okay. Oh, come on, that was magic.
And, uh, Howard?
Yep.
You, Sly? Ken? Julius? Michael?
Yeah.
Everybody online? Do we have anybody online, Josh?
You can be over here on the tip-top. Yeah, I see you put in, so.
You don't, you don't let them just talk whenever they want, though, do you? You gotta be the moderator, you gotta keep them in line.
Didn't we see something about that?
Well, usually they mute, they mute themselves, but, uh, I-
I can trust them.
The rattling of the paper.
Performance and program. What's your new journey?
Make the motion.
Second.
Call the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
That's what I was kidding about, the last couple packets, it's been.
Thank you, Josh.
I was going on the information.
That's not the only one.
Oh, no.
Sometimes the update doesn't change.
Wait, still on camera.
Oh!
It's like the personal trainer calling.
Recording stopped.
Play call and hours, and we'll connect the kit tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
They're calling. Get tomorrow.
You do go fast.
I can't, it's covering my planning board.
I was trying to make it quick, too.
I know, I know, I, I, you're trying to get-
You're trying to get...